Recorded. I'd like to take a moment before we go into the invocation to extend my apologies to citizens. I know that some citizens have sent me messages saying that the website was saying that this meeting starts at 7:00 PM. I'll talk with our clerical staff to find out, let them know that there was an error. But all regular meetings start at 7:30 per the charter. So please forgive us for that typo. We'll just call it that. All right, I'll call for the invocation. Ms. Garrison, would you do the invocation, please?
Oh, Lord, we thank you for another day of wholeness of mind, body, and soul. We thank you for peace, patience, joy, love, and other fruits of the Spirit. Lord, when so much is going on in our world and in our lives that brings pain, suffering, and hardships, we still want to praise you, praise you, Jesus. We thank you for our safety, full bellies, and guarding our mouths from unkind elements. We thank you for the opportunity to use our actions and words to imitate you, Jesus. In James 4, you tell us that you are against the proud, but show favor to the humble. You tell us to resist the devil, and he will flee. So we're calling on your presence, Jesus, to allow your will to be accepted at this meeting tonight in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Garrison. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I also, on tonight, our council clerk is, will not be with us, so I will have to play the role of council clerk and host. So it's gonna require a little patience on everyone's part, but we'll move forward with the meeting. All right, the next item on the agenda will be the roll call. So I'll call the roll. Councilwoman Eason.
Present.
Councilman Herring.
Here.
Councilwoman Smallwood.
Present.
Councilman Williams.
Here.
Councilwoman Wilson. I see an indication that she is here. Councilwoman Wilson.
Here.
This is the roll call.
Yes, I'm here.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Ferguson.
Here.
And Councilwoman Jones, yes, I am here. All right. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wilson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ferguson. Is there any discussion? And I do have something I want to bring to the agenda. I received a letter this afternoon from the Board of Elections that I want to make aware to the council. So I wanted to add that to the agenda. Any other discussion on the agenda? All right, hearing none. Councilwoman Eason, to accept the agenda.
Yes.
Councilman Herring.
Yes.
Councilwoman Smallwood.
Yes.
Councilman Williams. Councilman Williams, to accept the agenda. Okay, all right. Councilwoman Wilson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ferguson.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Jones, yes. Okay. All right. The next item on the agenda will be the approval of the minutes. The minutes being January 19th, 2021, public hearing. January 27th, 2021, a special regular meeting. February 1st, 2021, a public hearing. February the 3rd, 2021, a special work session. February 3rd, 2021, executive session closed. February 8th, 2021, a regular meeting. February 9th, 2021, a special, special work session. February 9th, 2021, an executive closed session. Is there a motion to accept the minutes?
I make a motion to accept the minutes.
Thank you, Councilwoman Eason. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Williams. All right. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the roll. Councilwoman Eason, to accept the minutes.
Yes.
Councilman Herring.
Yes.
Councilwoman Smallwood.
Yes.
Councilman Williams.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ferguson.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Jones, yes. Seven in agreement. All right. The next item on the agenda is the legislation for March. First piece of legislation is Charter Resolution 05-2021, a charter resolution to amend Article 4, the mayor, Section 404, powers and duties generally. Charter Resolution CRO 52021, sponsor Don Juan Williams, councilman. Public hearing, February 16th, 2021. Session, regular session. Date of introduction, March 8th, 2021. Once again, a charter resolution to amend Article 4, the mayor, Section 404, powers and duties generally. Whereas the city of Glen Arden is a municipal corporation of the state of Maryland, operating under the Article 11E of the Constitution of Maryland and 5-201 of the Local Government Article, Annotated Code of Maryland, as amended, and whereas the city council has a fiduciary responsibility to the city of Glen Arden, and whereas the city council has the responsibility to ensure that the residents of the city are provided services, and now therefore be it resolved and ordained that Article 4, the mayor, Section 404, powers and duties generally, be repealed, reenacted, and amended, amended to read as follows. Section 404, powers and duties generally. Notwithstanding any provision to the contrary in Section 802B of this charter, the mayor can incur, can incur any expense not over $2,000 on behalf of the city without prior approval of the council. So long is there as such expenditures are reported to the treasurer in order that the treasurer can remain in compliance with Section 802C and D of this section. I'm sorry, of this charter. Now, now therefore be it further or further resolved and ordained by the City Council of Glen Arden, Maryland, that the amendment to the charter of the city of Glen Arden hereby proposed by this enactment, adopted this eighth day of March 2021, shall be and become effective upon the 50th day after its adoption by the city council, unless petitioned or referendum in accordance with 4-301 of the Local Government Article, Annotated Code of Maryland, within 40 days following its adoption. The complete and exact copy of this charter resolution shall be posted in the city offices located at 8600 Glen Arden Parkway, Glen Arden, Maryland, for 40 days following its adoption by the council, and a fair summary of the charter resolution shall be published in a newspaper having general circulation in the city not less than four times a week. I'm sorry, not less than four times at weekly intervals, also within the 40-day period following the adoption of the city. Is there a motion to accept Charter Resolution 05-2021?
To move.
It's Councilman Williams, is there a second? I'll second it. All right. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll take the roll. Councilwoman Eason.
Yes.
Councilman Herring.
No.
Councilwoman Smallwood.
Pass.
Councilman Williams.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilson.
I'll pass.
Councilwoman Ferguson.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Jones, yes. Councilwoman Smallwood.
Pass.
Councilwoman Wilson.
Pass.
All right. All right, so there is four yeses and two, I'm sorry, three noes.
I didn't say no, I said pass.
Two passes is a no.
But I said pass, so you count me as a pass, not as a no, you count me as a pass. That's how I voted.
All right. So this resolution passes.
Madam President.
Councilwoman Wilson.
Yes, I agree with Councilwoman Smallwood.
All right, I'll make note of that, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next resolution. I'm sorry, the next piece of legislation is, okay, on the agenda they have 05-2021, an ordinance to amend the Personnel Manual, which is a first reading. So I don't think we have to read that. All right.
You do that. Yeah, ho, 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 madam, point of order.
I'm sorry. Councilman Williams.
You, unless you get a consensus from the council to not re-wave the reading of it, it needs to be waived. It needs to be read, excuse me.
Okay.
Now, I move, I move that the first reading be, the reading of it is waived this meeting. That's my motion.
Is there a second? Pardon? I'm sorry, Ms. Ferguson, did you say second?
No, I didn't. I was just saying, just read it.
Okay. There's no second.
Okay.
Just a moment. All right, ordinance 05-2021. Oh, my goodness. I'm sorry, please forgive me. Ordinance 05-2021, sponsor Carolyn Smallwood, councilwoman. Public hearing, February 16th, 2021. Session, regular session. Ordinance, an ordinance to amend the Personnel Manual. Whereas pursuant of Article 23A of the Maryland Code and Article 9, personnel of the Glen Arden Charter, the city council has the power to employ personnel and to set compensation and benefits and establish a merit system and to generally provide a personnel management system for the, for city employees. And whereas the city council amended and adopted new policies to include telework, family medical leave, bullying, and liberal leave policy into the city personnel manual, and whereas the city, I'm sorry, and whereas the council has previously adopted a personnel manual, and whereas council has determined that an amendment of the Personnel Manual is in the public interest, Section 1, now therefore be it resolved and ordained by the City Council of Glen Arden, Maryland, that the city of Glen Arden Personnel Manual be, and it is hereby repealed, reenacted, and amended in its entirety. Section 2, be it further resolved and ordained by the City Council of Glen Arden, Maryland on this eighth day, March 2021, that the ordinance shall become, no, that, that date is incorrect, so I'll just leave that blank, that this ordinance is and shall become effective 20 days after the date of adoption or upon passage by the council over the mayor's veto. So that would be the first reading for this resolution as far as the Personnel Manual is concerned. Okay, so our next piece of Okay, the next resolution will be Resolution R37. Okay. Resolution R37, 2021, at the, introduced by Robin Jones, council president, at the request of the administration. Public hearing was February 16th. The session was a regular session, and date of introduction is March 8th, 2021. A resolution to authorize the purchase of a walk-behind power mower for the Public Works Department. Whereas the Public Works mower is no longer functional, and whereas a functional mower is necessary to the proper and safe operation of Public Works responsibilities, and whereas the council has previously approved in the budget the purchase of equipment to outfit the Public Works Department, and whereas bids have been solicited for the purchase of suitable W36R commercial walk-behind mower with pump, and whereas John Deere has submitted the lowest responsible bid in the amount of $5,839.24 to include a power guard protection plan, and whereas the council has determined pursuant of Section 826 of the charter that an emergency exists that authorizes an override of bid requirements and award of bid to John Deere. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of Glen Arden, Maryland, sitting in regular session this eighth day of March 2021, one, that the proposal in the amount of $5,839.24 from John Deere for the purchase of a commercial-grade W36R commercial walk-behind power mower with a pump, and it be hereby approved. And two, payment for the said walk-behind mower shall be made from the support equipment 8360-10-60-60 budget line item. This resolution shall take effect immediately upon passage. All right. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. I'll call for the vote. Councilwoman.
Miss Jones, you have to get a motion and a second.
I'm sorry. Is there a motion to accept this, R37?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Eason, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ferguson. Is now, is there any discussion, I'm sorry? Hearing none, I'll call the roll. Councilwoman Eason.
Yes.
Councilman Herring.
Yes.
Councilwoman Smallwood.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilson.
Yes.
Councilman Williams.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ferguson.
Pass.
And Councilwoman Jones, yes. Seven yeses. This resolution passes. Okay. Now, Resolution 38 and 39 are basically the same. Though the prices are different. Okay. All right, the next piece of legislation is R38-2021, introduced by Robin Jones, council president, at the request of the administration. The public hearing was February 16th, 2021. The session was a regular session, the date of introduction was March 8th, 2021. A resolution to authorize the purchase of a ride-on power lawnmower, Z920MZTrak, for the Public Works Department. Whereas the Public Works mower is no longer functional, and whereas a functional mower is necessary to the proper and safe operation of Public Works responsibilities, and whereas the council has previously approved in the budget the purchase of equipment to outfit the Public Works Department, and whereas the bid have been solicited for the purchase of a suitable ride-on lawnmower, Z920MZTrak, and whereas John Deere has submitted the lowest responsible bid in the amount of $9,328.4 to include a power guard protection plan, and whereas the council has determined pursuant to Section 826 of the charter that an emergency exists that authorizes an override of the bid requirements and award of the bid to John Deere. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of Glen Arden, Maryland, sitting in regular session this eighth day of March 2021, as follows, that the proposal in the total amount of $9,328.4 from John Deere for the purchase, I guess that should be two, for the purchase of a commercial ride-on, I'm sorry, commercial-grade ride-on power lawnmower, Z920MZTrak, be, and it is hereby approved. And two, payment for the said ride-on lawnmower shall be made from the support equipment 8360-10-60-60 budget line item. This resolution shall take effect immediately upon passage. Is there a motion to accept Resolution R38-2021?
Yeah, I make a motion. I make a motion, this is Deborah Eason.
Thank you, Councilwoman Eason, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Herring. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the roll. Councilwoman Eason.
Yes.
Councilman Herring.
Yes.
Councilwoman Smallwood.
Yes.
Councilman Williams.
Yes.
Councilwoman, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Wilson.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ferguson.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Jones, yes. Seven yeses, this resolution passes. All right, the next item on the agenda is Resolution R39-2021, a resolution to authorize purchase of a ride-on lawnmower, Z950MZTrak, for the Public Works Department. Where, I'm sorry, Resolution 39-2021, introduced by Robin Jones, council president, cosponsors at the request of the administration. The public hearing was held February 16th, 2021, in a regular session. The date of introduction is March 8th, 2021. A resolution to authorize the purchase of a ride-on power mower, power lawnmower, Z950MZTrak, for the Public Works Department. Whereas the Public Works lawn, I'm sorry, whereas the Public Works mower is no longer functional, and whereas a functional mower is necessary to the proper and safe operation of Public Works responsibilities, and whereas the council has previously approved in the budget the purchase of equipment to outfit its Public Works Department, and whereas bids have been solicited for the purchase of a suitable ride-on power lawnmower, Z950MZTrak, and whereas John Deere has submitted the lowest responsible bid in the amount of $10,477.24 to include a power guard protection plan, and whereas the council has determined pursuant of Section 826 of the charter that an emergency exists that authorizes an override of a bid requirement and award of the bid to John Deere. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of Glen Arden, Maryland, sitting in regular session this eighth day of March 2021, as follows. One, that the proposal in the amount of $10,407.24 from John Deere for the purchase of a commercial-grade ride-on power lawnmower, Z9550MZTrak, and it is hereby approved. And two, payment for the ride, payment for the said ride-on power lawnmower shall be made from the support equipment 8360-10-60-60 budget line item. This resolution shall take effect immediately upon passage. Is there a motion to accept Resolution R39-2021?
I make the motion.
Thank you, Councilwoman Eason.
Second.
Second is Councilwoman Wilson, thank you, Councilwoman Wilson. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the roll. Councilwoman Eason.
Yes.
Councilman Herring.
Yes.
Councilwoman Smallwood.
Yes.
Councilwoman, I'm sorry, Councilman Williams.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ferguson.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Jones is yes, that's seven yeses, this resolution passes. All right. All right, the next resolution on the March agenda is Resolution R40. Resolution R40-2021, introduced by James Herring, councilman. Public hearing was February 16th. The session was a regular session, date of introduction is March 8th, 2021. A resolution to remove Councilwoman Robin Jones as council president. Whereas the city of Glen Arden is governed by its city charter, and whereas Council President Robin Jones has consistently violated the council rules by refusing to adhere to the rules that govern motions and not calling for a vote, see attached. And whereas Council President Robin Jones refuses to provide, to preside over the meetings in a manner that is fair and equitable to all council members. And whereas Council President Robin Jones violates the Open Meetings Act by refusing to allow all citizens into the virtual meeting and keeps them sitting in the Zoom waiting room, see attached, which I haven't seen yet. And whereas Council President Robin Jones has consistently withheld public information from citizens, from the citizens of Glen Arden during the national pandemic by refusing to show city meetings on the cable TV station. And whereas in August 2020, Council President Robin Jones signed a purchase order and a check in the amount of $98 for the ill. for the illegal purchase of a paper shredder for Councilman Don Juan Williams for his personal use in his home. See attached. And whereas the city of Glen Arden twenty-twenty-one budget does not allow for the purchase of equipment for council members' homes. And whereas city tax dollars are not to be used for personal use of city council members. I'm sorry, of council members. Whereas in August twenty-twenty, Council President Robin Jones illegally purchased herself a Lenovo ThinkPad E ninety-five in the amount of one thousand, sixty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cent. And whereas the purchase of computers are not approved in the twenty-twenty-one legislative budget. Whereas in September twenty-twenty, Council President Robin Jones illegally purchased a Surface Pro X computer for Councilman Don Juan Williams in the amount of one thousand, five hundred, sixty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cent. See attached. And whereas the purchase of computers are not approved in the twenty-twenty-one legislative budget. And whereas Section four oh four of the city charter states that the mayor shall not incur any expenses nor any nor enter into into any contract on behalf of the city without prior approval of the council. And whereas on November third, twenty-nineteen, Mayor Edward Estes signed a contract with law firm Shipley and Horn without the approval from the council. See attached. Whereas the meeting, whereas at a meeting, Council President Robin Jones was put on notice that then Council President James Herring was not going to sign the Shipley and Horn checks because the contract was illegally entered into by the mayor. And whereas in August twenty-twenty, Council President Robin Jones knowingly signed checks payable to Shipley and Horn for the amount of one thousand, one hundred and ten dollars. And whereas Section eight oh nine E states that any authorization of payment or incurring of obligations in violation of the provisions of this charter shall be void, and any payment so made illegal, such action shall be cause for removal of any officer who knowingly authorizes or made such payment to incur such obligations, and he or she shall be liable to the city for any amounts amount so paid. And whereas the city council took an oath to uphold the laws of the city of Glen Arden. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of Glen Arden, Maryland, sitting in regular session on this eighth day of March twenty-two, twenty-two-one as follows: Council President Robin Jones violated Section four oh four F of the section F and Section eight oh nine E of the sa- city charter. Okay. Council President Robin Jones shall be, no, I'm sorry, Council President Robin Jones be liable to the city for the total amount of three thousand, eight hundred, forty-seven dollars and ninety-seven cents per Section eight oh nine E of the city charter. Three, Council President Robin Jones be removed as Council President per Section eight oh nine E of the city charter. Four, Council Vice President Angela Ferguson assume the position of Council President per Section three oh five B of the city charter. This resolution shall take effect immediately following approval by the council. Is there a motion to accept Resolution R forty twenty-two-one?
Some move.
Councilman?
Second.
I'm sorry, Councilman Herring made the motion. And I'm sorry, the second was Councilwoman Wilson?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Is there any discussion? I have one thing that I'd like to discuss about this and to the, to, to bring clarity and to let the citizens know. I went back and looked at the P O for the shredder that Mr. Williams requested. And looking at the P O, that did not come out of his discretionary fund. The Finance Department pulled that out of the, the monies for that shredder out of office supplies. And so his discretionary fund was not used for that. It was pulled for, pulled out of the pot for office supplies. And it is on that P O. Any other discussion? Hearing none. We'll call for the vote. Councilwoman Eason?
Yes.
Councilman Herring?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smallwood?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
No.
Councilwoman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ferguson?
Abstain.
And Councilwoman Jones? Before I cast my vote. But you know, all of this is really not even necessary. Uh, no. Councilwoman Smallwood, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Eason would be the next person.
Um, yes, one comment that I want to make just, um, I believe there are more important things that need to be done to improve the city of Glen Arden that this legislation, which once again I call it willy-nilly, does not address. Therefore abstain. Thanks. So I'm abstaining.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Abstain. Councilwoman Smallwood?
Yes.
All right. So we have three yeses, two no's, and two abstain. This legislation fails. All right. The next item on the agenda is the mayor's report. Mayor Estes, fifteen minutes, please. Thank you. Need to unmute yourself, Mayor Estes.
Okay. All right, thank you, uh, Madam President, to the City Council and the citizens of the city of Glen Arden. Uh, this is Mayor Estes presenting to you the March twenty-two-one mayor's report. This is the legislative edition, so we're gonna have a highlight on legislature in Annapolis that's taking place affecting our city. Uh, one of the first things I'm gonna talk about is Executive Office of the Mayor is the key accomplishments for the last period. Uh, last period, I had the honor of announcing that three of our public schools within the city boundaries were given a proclamation from the city celebrating the quality education opportunities during School Choice Week, which is celebrated across the country by millions of students, parents, educators, schools, and organizations to raise awareness of the need for effective educational options. I recognize January twenty-fourth through the thirtieth, twenty-two-one as Glen Arden School Choice Week. The local schools honored were Art Moore Elementary School, Judge Savania Woods Elementary School, and Glen Arden Woods Elementary School. Also during this period, administrative legislation, uh, the past couple of months have brought forth several legislative approvals that will have a long-term influence in the coming years. Here are a few administration co-sponsored resolutions that will help advance the administration of Glen Arden. A resolution was passed that authorized that the mayor will appoint Timothy George as the new city manager. That deserves a round of applause. An attempt to appeal an ordinance to increase the mayor's salary was vetoed by the mayor, and the repeal was turned down in the ordinance. So the salary increase will remain the same. A special note on the budget. An emergency ordinance to amend the city of Glen Arden's budget for FY twenty-two-one was eventually passed in this past legislation period. So as far as our District twenty-four legislation, our delegate Eric Barron is addressing public health inequality as highlighted by the pandemic as his top priority. Uh, those impacts have been disparately felt by communities across the state, and we must actively support those who have felt the great burden, says Mr. De- Mr. Delegate Barron. That's why he has introduced the Health Equity Resource Community Act HB four sixty-three. Also, he is moving forward with pushing two bills that would establish offices of Ins- of Inspector General for both the Health Department and for the General Services Department. Those are bills, House Bill three ninety-three and House Bill one twenty-one. Also, he's going to talk a little bit about, as, as far as his bill is concerned, is the General Assembly's leadership efforts on unemployment insurance. So, uh, the House, I'm sorry, I skipped over. Where did I go? Okay. Yeah, that's right. Uh, the House of Senate Leadership announced that unemployment insurance reform package to immediately fix the broken unemployment insurance system. Over the last ten months, thousands of Marylanders experienced issues with claims and weren't, and were unable to get their uninsured uh, uh, unemployment insurance questions answered. Currently, there are still nearly four thousand Marylanders who have unresolved uninsured, uh, uninsured claims, uh, issues. So Maryland's unemployment system was unprepared for a statewide emergency and needs to be reformed. The unemployment reform package makes short-term and structural change to fix Maryland's broken UI system, including modernizing the UI system to ensure that the Marylanders get, can get their money they deserve, improving customer service, creating more accountability, and planning for the next emergency. Our delegate Jazz Lewis, also of District twenty-four, stated that he is proud that he has introduced a Ha- House Bill thirty-two to not only legalize cannabis, but to finally bring to a close the disastrous wrong drugs. This bill will allow for a brand-new equitable recreational industry and provide a spudgement for those in the justice system. So that's a, a, a bill that not only legalizes the use of marijuana for those over the age of eighteen, but also would expunge a lot of the criminal records of past per persons convicted of the use of marijuana. So the next delegate that we're gonna talk about is Andrea Fletcher Harrison. And she has put out a really exciting House Bill that is House Bill eleven twenty-four. And that will, will bill thus for the proposal of requiring the Office of Student of Financial Assistance within the Maryland Higher Education Commission to award at least a certain percentage of annual grant money from the Richard W. Collins the Third Leadership with Honor of Scholarships to students at, at Bowie State University. And generally relating to the Richard W. Collins, the, the Third Leadership with Honor Scholarship. The office shall one, award at least twenty-five percent of its total annual grant money to students at, at Bowie, uh, State University, I'm sorry, yes, at, at Bowie State University, and two, award seventy-five percent of the remaining amount of the, of its total annual grant money to students at historically black colleges and universities other than Bowie State University. Another outstanding legislation that the delegate, that Delegate Harrison has sponsored is House Bill four eighty-eight for the purpose of designating a certain day for Juneteenth National Freedom Day as a state legal holiday and state employee holiday. Repealing the requirement that the governor declare the certain date as Juneteenth National Freedom Day, and generally relating to Juneteenth National Freedom Day. Stay tuned to see more how this makes, uh, how these legislations will make it through the House and the Senate. Also Senator Benson has put out a bill, State Bill zero eighty-fourth, excuse me, eight hundred and forty-three. That bill is, is, uh, synopsis explains that prohibiting the Board of Public Works from approving public-private partnerships agreement for I four ninety-five and I two seventy public-private partnership program, unless agreements include that at least ten percent of the total revenue remaining after construction costs be deposited in special funds to be used only for transit projects in accordance with a certain memorandum, authorizing the public-private partnership agreement to require a bidder to agree to initiate a community benefit agreement, et cetera. And that's the important part, is that the partnership would agree that a bidder would be required to initiate a community benefit agreement. That would be because the city of Glen Arden would be one of those cities that would possibly benefit from those benefit agreements because of the impact of I four ninety-five if it expands throughout our city. The Glen Arden Annexation Plan, the Annexation Plan Team has met via Zoom and teams to discuss the phase-two assignments to evaluate the land ownership obstacles and solutions to overcome misinformation of what annexation is and the many benefits for future businesses and residents. We will meet in early March and prepare a monthly report for the council. The city website update includes the website committee met, met on February eleventh to review the city's site map to reflect the changes the website committee discussed. The site map was uploaded to the revised portal for the revised project leader's review. The next step is the revised will schedule a meeting with the council, with Councilwoman Eason to discuss the site map and answer any questions that the, uh, any questions that the Councilwoman Eason has or the members of the committee. Ms. Wilson, excuse me, Ms. Eason, will also provide additional update regarding the committee's activities. Formation of the twenty-twenty-one Board of Elections. As required by the charter, I am responsible for organizing the Board of Elections months prior to the city elections. But however, with the coronavirus impact we experience in operations and community engagement, the board did not start off as scheduled by the charter. However, with ten determined residents volunteering for the Board of Elections and help from the city manager, Tim George, and the Executive Assistant Nyla Johnson, excuse me, Nalia Johnson, we are successfully moving ahead with the Board of Election for the May twenty-twenty-one election. All meetings are currently being held on Zoom by way of the Executive Office of the Mayor. Couple of development projects that we have discussed earlier and that we have received notice of decision, which was issued by the zoning hearing examiner regarding the Woodmore Overlook case, that they did get a notice of decision, which has gone to all the people involved in the case, and they have fifty-day notice of appeal of the, uh, notice by the examiner of approval. Uh, so that's where they are currently. Uh, the ceremonial events. I had the honor of not only swearing in one of the largest number of officers at one time, but on two separate occasions the past couple of months. So that was a phenomenal, uh, tradition that we do, and we had a great response and from the family members and other members of the police enforcement community within the county. In addition, I have sworn in a new Board of Election members during Zoom meetings, which is also another first. So as far as intergovernmental relations, uh, with the county Executive's Office, uh, the county executive of the, of the mayor, excuse me, the Executive Office of the Mayor has maintained weekly correspondence and early community outreach with the county health department, the CDC, and the go- and Governor Hogan, along with the Maryland Health Department on February On February seventeenth, Prince George's County received notification from the Maryland Department of Health informing them that due to winter weather sweeping the nation, the four thousand two hundred first doses of vaccine promised, uh, that week would be delayed. Due to this unfortunate delay, the Health Department postponed all first-dose vaccinations scheduled for February nineteenth until the vaccine arrives from the state. All second-dose vaccine vaccination appointments are continuing as planned. If you had a first-dose vaccination scheduled for any of those dates, you will receive a new appointment for the week following, which is past February twenty-eighth. As far as the Census Bureau is concerned, they're still getting out great information to our citizens. So if you're interested in information regarding, uh, demographics and socioeconomic data by race and ethnicity, you can find that new data platform called data dot census dot gov. The Maryland Department of Planning has also granted awards during Af- uh, Black History Month. And one of the, uh, award winners was the Prince George's African American Museum of Cultures and Cultural Center, which is in North Brentwood and Prince George's County. And they received a grant of two thousand, uh, whatever sister cities in the Maryland Black Matters Association. So I just wanted to give them a shout out for the great work that they do there at the African American Museum in the city of North Brentwood. Also, uh, wanted to, uh, say that the, um, Maryland Department of Highway and Safety has given us information, uh, regarding there that they've got their draft environmental impact statement out to people to review. And they will conduct a hearing and testimonies for the DEIS. And, uh, you'll hear more information on that, uh, by going to their website. Also, the Maryland Black Matters, they had an event, uh, which was also to free ex- spudgement clinic on February twentieth. And they also, um, housed a spoken word poetry program on February twenty-sixth. So I'mma wrap this up, but, uh, the next upcoming task for this period we're coming forward will be the website for the city of Glen Arden. Continue vaccination of and COVID nineteen community outreach, city budget for FY twenty twenty-two draft, the Board of Elections Committee, and the Maryland General Assembly Activity. If you have any additional questions or comments, you can contact us. But, uh, we're also encouraging people to, uh, learn it, live it, and make it Black History three sixty-five days a year. And don't forget how to wear your mask properly. And that's the end of my report.
Mayor Estes, is there any questions from the council?
Uh, Council President, I have a question for the mayor.
Councilwoman Smallwood?
Oh, uh, Mayor, at the work section, I asked for some information and reference to annexation. I haven't received the yet, so women aren't getting it.
At the work session, we just discussed, I would prepare a report this coming month, just as I discussed just now, that we're wrapping up Phase One and Two and that I'm preparing a report for the entire council in the next couple of weeks. And you will also receive that report at that time.
Can you give me a date?
No, I can't, mid-March.
To mid-March is next week.
Within a week or two.
Okay. Mid-March, okay.
I don't want to interrupt, uh, Councilwoman Smallwood. Is it, was that the end of your, uh, inquiry?
Yep.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council to the mayor? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to the Chief of Police's report. Chief O'Donnell?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, on January sixth, the police, Glen Arden Police assisted the U.S. Marshals and the Prince George's County Police Service search warrant at eighty-four twenty-one Charter Place. Recovered was four firearms and firearm-related evidence and one arrest was made. On January eighth, a telephone meeting with the manager of the Glen Arden Housing Authority to work on an eviction at an address where there was a homicide back in May. At the time, uh, the Sheriff's Department didn't receive the paperwork, but that has been accomplished and the person has been evicted. I had a conference call residence on the thirty-six-hundred block of Tyrell Avenue. They advised that a house was operating in an auto repair shop and that vehicles were speeding up and down the street. We took care of that and I had a meeting with the citizens last week and they're happy about the results of the investigation. On January eleventh, we had a conference call with the Office of Emergency Management about our COVID vaccine. All police officers that wanted a COVID shot have received both of them at this time. On January twelfth, we had an armed robbery at the seven eleven at seven fifty-six in the morning. A lone gunman entered and, uh, demanded money. We conducted a K-nine search in the track, but, uh, that case is still open. It's assigned to the county police and there's been a number of seven eleven robbers within the county. So we're giving special attention to the seven eleven. On January fifteenth, I had a conference call with the United States Secret Service, the FBI, the Maryland State Police, and the D.C. Metropolitan Police to discuss inauguration process. We received our specific instructions and they were passed on to the officers. On January eighteenth, we had a conference call with the Glen Arden Housing Authority. We relayed the plans for the inauguration and the update on the activities in the area. On January nineteenth, we had a conference call with the, uh, Maryland Chiefs of Police Association about the inauguration. On January twenty-seventh, I had a conference call with subjects with citizens on Red Oak Lane. Their main complaint was a black Volkswagen, people using drugs. That's been resolved. On February second, I had a conference call with the property manager at the Woodmore Town Center Residential Area. We discussed several citizens' complaint about lighting and parking and vehicles not stopping at the stop sign. That's been resolved. On February third, Lieutenant Robinson participated in the coffee club. We talked about, uh, crime issues. And, uh, the biggest thing was we've had two airbag deaths in the seventy-nine-hundred block of Johnson Avenue. Those seem to have subsided. And on February fifth and six, our police officers and civilians worked with the council and the mayor to give out PPE, and that's my report.
All right, is there any questions from the council to the chief? Hearing none, we'll move to the, uh, city manager's report. Mister George, please forgive me. I didn't mean to. I wasn't overlooking you. It's just been a long day for us. You know that.
It's totally fine. Um, I'm just gonna hit a couple of high notes, um, on the report. Uh, kind of some updates. The contract for the water sewer not only has been, uh, executed, but they were on-site today, um, at MLK shutting off that water. Uh, we'll be out there tomorrow to, um, get them into the building so they can disconnect the meter and then that will be done. We've had two different contractors reach out and ask questions to submit bids on the electrical. We're hoping for a few more. But right now that that process is ongoing. We submitted, I submitted the final, uh, draft budget to the mayor and the mayor went and I had about a four-hour work session to go line by line through the budget and have made some final changes. And we're now kind of in production mode, so we're editing the document and and, uh, cleaning it up and getting all the numbers looking good. Um, and we're definitely gonna meet the deadline of getting you all the budget before the end of March. So we'll, uh, exceed the the deadline by two weeks for sure. COVID bags, as noted, uh, by the chief, we handed out, uh, three hundred bags and a very big thank you to all of the council members who took loads of bags themselves and handed them out to residents that uh, were unable to come and get them. That helped us get over three hundred. We probably gave around two fifty, two seventy, maybe a little bit less on-site. And then the council members handed out another thirty or forty or fifty, and that was really great stuff. We're very happy with that. Finally, our mail chip, the the new e-newsletter that we're trying to put together. We, uh, we have thirty-six people on our list. We would love that to be three hundred and sixty people or more. Uh, we're gonna send out an initial mailing to everyone this week just to kind of say thanks for joining the list. Um, if if you all are just talking with your neighbors, friends, family in the area and the city, encourage them to go to our website and join the E-list so that we can have a a much bigger, um, selection of residents of the city. So when we start sending out kind of the meaningful newsletters, we we have a good group of folks. And then finally, uh, as I mentioned last week, uh, we have changed the 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 way we're gonna do the manager's report in the hope to make it a little easier uh, and quicker for the council and the residents to read and get through. Uh, we've changed the code enforcement report from a long kind of narrative of everything they do to a summary of the action items that they took care of. Your vehicles impounded, citations, that sort of thing, so you can get a quick nutshell of exactly what they're doing. Um, and hopefully you all find that to be, um, a little bit more useful than than the longer report. Madam President, that's all I have for my report.
Thank you, sir. Is there any questions for the city manager from the council? Hearing none, we'll move on to the city treasurer's report. Mister Bratton?
Good evening, citizens, council, administration. The city treasurer's report includes a statement of revenues and expenditures for the month ending January thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. January, we have revenues of eight hundred eighty-five thousand, eight thirty-two, and expenses of two hundred ninety-three thousand, four twenty-seven. Eight hundred forty thousand of that was, the revenues was from property taxes. These activities resulted in year-to-date total revenues exceeding year-to-date total expenses by one million eight hundred forty-three thousand, three eighty-four. You know, during the month, I worked with the, um, mayor and city manager on, um, getting the FY twenty-two budget together. The FY twenty audit has, uh, been completed and the auditors have forwarded the audit report to the state on Friday, February twenty-sixth, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mister Bratton. Are there any questions from the council to the treasurer? All right, hearing none?
Uh, President, I have a statement. This is Mayor Estes.
A statement to the, about the treasurer?
No, I just wanted to mention something in the chat room that I posted the, uh, mayor's report. That's all.
All right. Thank you, sir. Anyway, like I said, it's been a long day for us. Okay, um, no more surprises. Anyway, oh, before we move to into citizens' comments, I had a, uh, item added to the, uh, agenda concerning a letter from the Board of Elections, uh, which reads, uh, and I want to do that before we go into citizens' comments. And that, uh, reads, "Good afternoon, Ma- uh, Madam Council President. Considering the ongoing COVID nineteen pand- pandemic and in the best interest of our citizens, particularly our senior citizens, the Board of Election hereby request an emergency council meeting to discuss modifying the election rules to include no-excuse absentee voting and or mail-in voting. Please note, these are pending deadlines that will be driven by the discussion and your prompt attention to this matter will be greatly appreciated. Uh, please let me know what we can do to have this matter expedited. And I'm thinking if we're going to, uh, do something, uh, to the, uh, have to amend the charter, uh, then it's gonna have to be, um, a resolution. I, uh, spoke with the, um, had conversation with, uh, including the, um, city attorney, and he has, uh, uh, drafted two resolutions, uh, emergency resolutions that, uh, we could possibly use to get these, uh, items. The, uh, no-excuse absentee voting and the mail-in voting included so that the, uh, election board can move forward. So what I need, uh, I want to do right now is take a consensus as to, uh, what council members are available Tuesday or Thursday for this, uh, special regular meeting to, uh, go over this information so that the election board can move forward.
Madam President?
Councilman Herring?
Yes, I think we need to look at this closely. I mean, I I I agreed something needs to be done, but we have an ordinance on the books right now for absentee balling, balloting, and that probably just needs to be amended to add to add no-excuse balloting, which is probably, which is just be an emergency ordinance.
That's why we want to have a special meeting, special regular meeting, Councilman Herring, so that we can sit down and discuss this, possibly have the attorney present, uh, to, uh, look at this with us.
Well, you said he's already drafted resolutions. Well, we got an ordinance on the book. The resolutions aren't gonna do any good.
All right, th- this is something, like I said, that needs to be discussed in the special regular meeting. Let me start out with, like I said, with a consensus to find out what day the council was available this week, Wednesday or Thursday, maybe Friday. Uh, Councilwoman Easton?
Hey, I just have a question. So basically, the meeting that we're having is to discuss what the lawyer sent you regarding the the mail-in and the
No-excuse absentee.
Okay, so this is just a discussion about legislation, but not actually bringing any legislation forward. Cause if you discuss legislation, that means you're gonna have to have another meeting if you're bringing legislation forward, correct?
Well, what he and what he, uh, introduced to me was that Governor Hogan, uh, put out a emergency executive order for during COVID. And since we're late with our, um, elec- everything is behind for the election and we're trying to move forward to make sure that we're on target with the election. Uh, he's, uh, he's, uh, forwarded me a, the governor, the state of, uh, Maryland, Governor Hogan's, uh, executive order enabling municipalities to postpone. This is not the right thing. I'm sorry, uh. Mister George, can you kind of help me out with this for a moment, please?
Yeah, the the governor passed, uh, several executive orders last year with, when COVID was coming out, when the state was getting ready for their election, that allows municipalities to suspend, uh, their basic charter rules, especially as it relates to elections, to pass a mer- emergency ordinances and emergency charter changes so that the elections can be taken, go off in a timely manner with respect to, uh, folks with COVID nineteen and not being able to socially gather. A lot of municipalities have used that to allow for, um, mail-in voting, unrestricted absentee voting and other ways to allow, uh, residents to to vote without having to gather. But the key, and and this is something that that Kevin talked about, our city attorney, was, is that the executive order allows municipalities to suspend their current charter rules within reason in order to pass, uh, new rules to allow for elections to take place in a timely manner.
Okay, so to follow up, so basically the meeting that you're asking for is to discuss the legislation that he developed?
Well, I think
Okay, I tell you what, I'm I'm available Okay, I'm available on Tuesday and I guess the lawyer is gonna be available when we have this meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Tuesday is tomorrow, this was Wednesday, Thursday or Friday.
Wednesday. Or Friday, nope. Wednesday or Friday.
Councilman Herring.
Uh, I have to, I have to check and see, I'm not sure. I do want to be clear, because my, I mean, I'm thinking in the same vein as maybe not as Miss Eason. If we're gonna have this meeting, shouldn't we come to a conclusion on? What we're gonna do and have the attorney ready to draw it up immediately?
Yeah, because you're gonna lose more time.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I think that that's already in the works.
Well, it's not in the works if he's doing resolutions, he needs to be doing an emergency ordinance.
Well, this is what it is, an emergency resolution.
He needs to do an emergency ordinance, we have an ordinance on the book. He can't do an emergency resolution, the ordinance supersedes a resolution, he has to do an emergency ordinance.
All right. Thank you. So.
Madam President, there's no such thing as emergency resolutions, emergency, you have emergency ordinance, but there's no such thing as emergency resolution. You do a charter resolution. We don't have any.
Okay. So Councilman Herring, what day were you, did you say you were there?
I'm not sure, what days are you looking at, Wednesday, Thursday or Friday?
Yes.
I have to, I I'll let you know, I probably can make myself available for any of those days. So whatever day you have booked, I have to see.
Councilwoman Smallwood.
Whatever day.
Thank you. Councilman Williams.
Friday is best for me.
Councilwoman Wilson.
And my my suggestion also would be is that you schedule it as a special meeting that we can. Have a vote and hearing or whatever.
Right. Councilwoman Wilson.
I'll be, I'll be available any of those days.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ferguson.
Wednesday. Wednesday.
Wednesday. Council President. Councilwoman Wilson. Yeah, I'm sorry, I made a mistake, not not Thursday. No Thursday.
Ms. Jones.
Correct. Councilwoman Eason.
Is the lawyer going to be available any of these days? It's like if you all had already talked to him. Did he already tell you all that he's available this week to meet?
I believe that he is.
And and he, Madam, if I might, he he also said that on the. If he's not available, his associate Mike Ryan, who's been. Who drafted the resolutions and is familiar with this process will be available if he is not.
Okay. I'm just looking at the time delays because it was scheduled in a meeting to meet with the lawyer. And the lawyer is not available, then we'll have to reschedule and is because of the short window. It'll get a lot shorter.
Right, his his associate will be available when he's, Kevin and I spoke about this earlier, his his associate will be available if he is not.
Let me ask this question now, is this anything, now, is this all that? And you may or may not know this, is this all that the election board needs at this time? I guess this is a question for Mr. George, I guess. And the only reason I'm asking that is once again because of the short window. If there's something else that they need, that should probably be brought to the table too. You know what I'm saying?
Right, well, if I might, I could direct this to the to the Board of Elections. Chair, who's also Mr. Royal Montgomery, who's on the call. If there's anything in addition to passing the legislation that that you would want to bring up at this meeting.
Actually, there will be, we we would like to request an additional ten thousand dollars simply because. The funds that were allocated for the election now were based on elections that occurred. Pre covid and so of course we're incurring additional charges that. That are involved with things that we have to do that that are covid related. So we'll be asking for an additional ten thousand and. That is. All that we're asking for at this time in addition to the. To the amendment in the charter to include no excuse voting and or mail in voting. Which we need to have expedited because, you know, we, it 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 impedes with our. Our pending deadlines and we want to be able to. When we communicate with the citizens, we want to be able to honestly say. That there will be, we will have an option. For mail in voting or. At the absentee no excuse voting. Thank you.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Okay, so. I'll look at the consensus for the. All right, and we'll send out to the council. Information on the meeting and information on. The. Emergency ordinance. Are there any more questions concerning this? Council President. Councilwoman Wilson.
Yes, we will have the. Paperwork for the request of additional funding. Will we be given the paperwork prior to the meeting for that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Moving forward in the agenda. It's now time for citizens' comments. Citizens' comments are five minutes, please raise your hand if you're. If I can see you. Mr. Richard Montgomery, Mr. Richard Aurora Montgomery.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, again, I just want to. Just want to express the urgency in. In in the request, I mean, we want to make sure that. You know, we. We increase voter participation. And and also, you know, just. So that we can safely, you know, we can offer our citizens. A safe method for voting as well, just as, you know, just as, just as was done with the general elections this past year. And and of course, you know, I mean, we we want to, you know, particularly as I stated, you know, we want to be particularly. Concerned of. Our senior citizens, you know, we want to make sure that. You know, we provide them with the with the with the proper outlet as well so that they can safely vote and. You know, and no one is left without a vote. Okay, and also I just wanted to commend you. Ms. Jones, for reading that resolution. That involved yourself, I know that must have been hard for you to read yourself. But again, I I just want to commend you for being able to get through reading that without hesitation. And and I agree that, you know, I I just think it's time for everyone to focus on. What needs to be done for the city. As opposed to who needs to be censured or who needs to be removed. You know, we really need to do what, you know, do do what we need to do and focus our efforts and. You know, our efforts on what's best for the city and moving the city forward. That's all I need to say, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Fahy.
Hi, President Jones, hello, everyone. I just have a question around the mobile vaccination units that the county is deploying to help those who can't. Who aren't mobile, who can't, you know, potentially go to appointments to get their vaccine, if we're working with any of the. Local county representatives to get a mobile vaccination unit. To Glen Arden, given the large senior citizen population we have.
I haven't heard anything about that per se. Mr. George, have you heard anything pertaining to that for the city of Glen Arden?
The mayor and I, someone, one of the members of the county who is. Coordinating vaccines reached out to see if we would be able, if they could use our gold room. As a vaccination site, so we've been in contact with them. Trying to coordinate on what what they would need. And how that would work and of course our concerns are making sure that. Our building stays safe and that we get it clean and things like that, so we are. Looking into the possibility of using the gold room since it's not. Being rented out now because of covid as a vaccination site in the city.
Okay, thank you, and would that vaccination site have give prioritization to Glen Arden citizens? Or would it just basically be open to the county or the state?
Really, it's 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 up to the county would be running that program, we would just simply be providing the space. Certainly, our hope would be that the priority would be for Glen Arden residents specifically, but. But we wouldn't have anything to do with the actual running of the vaccinations, we would just simply open up the space and and provide the. The room for them.
I'd like to add to that statement is that this was a couple of weeks in the making. That we were talking with the. The county executive's office and the municipal liaison. With our concerns for the municipalities within Prince George's County. And this was the one that I brought up that we, I was recommending mobile sites. But they're referring to it in a sense that it's mobile, like being able to go to people's homes. But that's not the understanding that I have, what we're doing is providing. An opportunity so people don't have to go far or have to stand in a long line. And they could come directly to Glen Arden, so. We haven't been given any information except they're gonna get back to us within the next two weeks and that was last week. So hopefully we'll hear something this week.
Okay, well, I got this from participating in some of county county executive also Brooks calls. That the mobile vaccination units, they they do exactly that, they go to people's homes, so for the homebound seniors or for those, you know, who wouldn't even be able to make it to the gold room. That could be an option. For them, so it would be, I think it would be a good thing if. We can maybe reach out to some of our. County representatives and see how that could be. Made a possibility here. Thank you.
Thank you. See, Ms. Cross's, Mrs. Cross's hand is up.
Thank you, Council President, again, thank you all to the council members for what has been a very interesting meeting tonight. Again, to be commended on the resolutions that have come forward. I do want to recognize again the need for the city to cater to city business. There is a resolve on behalf of Prince George's County that has not yet been taken into account. And it's called twenty thirty five. There is much bigger fish to fry than many of the resolutions that we are currently seeing, which are not really servicing the people. Of Glen Arden. Not that any one penny should be spent. In. Disregard. For all of what Glen Arden has, belongs to her people. Though I do ask going forward that we cater to the love of the city. We cater to the image and the care of the city. It is in critical need. And we as citizens are asking our council to step forward in that level of responsibility. We need you. We need you to be the elected officials that we asked for four years ago. And continue to ask for every meeting since. I thank you so much for the opportunity to speak on these topics. For the mayor, the cannibalists, the cannibal, legalizing of marijuana. Is that something that the citizens here could utilize or capitalize, so if it's a legislative report? Then those things of legislation should matter to the sum total of the population of Glen Arden. And I just wanted to understand if there had been some measure of review. That says that there are citizens who are medicinal whereby that legislation could assist because. Attorney General Frost on last Thursday held a consumer. Awareness session that I found to be a tad bit more impactful. Because it spoke to. Millions of dollars that would come towards. Consumer protectionisms. And it it talked to millions of dollars that the state was in the senate. Actually lobbying for. Or 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 debating for. Bringing into the state of Maryland that would be dispersed throughout its citizen states. For the purposes of residential and housing relief. For folks that went through covid, lost their jobs, had to take loans. Who will unfortunately. At the end of July, actually have all of that interest roll back on them. So if they couldn't pay it before covid, then the expects is that you're gonna experience a level of homelessness. That the city must be prepared to address. And not only that, be prepared to petition. Our legislators for the money that's coming forward. Six hundred million, it is expected to go to Baltimore County. How much do you think we should get? That's the kind of stuff as a citizen. Considering our demographic is possibly more important at this point. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on these topics.
Thank you, Ms. Cross. Any other citizens' comments, let me look on the page two.
Ms. Garrison.
Ms. Garrison.
Yes. I was listening to, I think it's R forty twenty twenty one. The complaints. About you as the president of the council. And I was just wondering why those complaints came so late. It seemed as though. It was, there was this time lapse. As though things were trying to be accumulated. For the purpose of presenting them when they should have been handled immediately by the council. I also want to say that. I have walked the neighborhood with you. And I have found that. You listen to complaints, you pick up trash, you report things that need to be fixed and they get fixed. And it seems. You seem to push for things to get done as quick as possible and they can't get done if. The council does not act quickly on those things. I'm just wondering. How. So much can be stacked against you. If. You cannot have a certain amount of. Free will. To. Push for. And pay for getting those things done. I do not think the money is going in your pocket, I think that it is going in the pocket of. The community. We see that you are working hard. And you seem to be forthright in your presentations. So. Hopefully. Things will get turned around and everybody will be working. With the same agenda in mind. I noticed that a lot of things are put off and put off and put off. And that may have something to do with. How you go forward in taking care of business, because that's what I see you doing. Thank you. because that's what I see you doing. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other citizens' comments?
Ms. Jones, I actually have one other question, please, if I may, for the, for the chief.
Okay.
May I?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
I was just looking to make sure.
Okay, chief, are you on?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I heard you mentioned that there were, there were some, some, some guns that you had to retrieve from, from a home?
Yes, sir.
Where exactly was that? I'm sorry, did you say Trotter?
Decatur Trotter Place. That's a new development off, off of Bright Seat Road.
Oh, okay. Okay, and, and there were guns confiscated, you mentioned?
Four gun, yes, sir.
Okay. All right, criminal, I guess that's a word, criminal possession or something?
Yeah, it's part of a bigger investigation.
Got it. Okay. All right, thank you. That's all I had. Thank you. Thank you, councilman.
All right, and I see Ms., before I, let me see. Uh, Ms. Cross, again, because I see no other hands up.
Hey, question, forgive me. Thank you, Council President. Question for the chief. We have been hearing a lot of what sounds like gunfire. Is that indeed gunfire? And the other night, we heard something that sounded like a generator bust. So I, I appreciate your report on the seizing of the ammunitions, but are we seeing an uptick in this type of activity? Because it seems to be frequently occurring over the last month exactly. Is there some type of turf war, anything that the citizens should be aware of?
Oh, ma'am, I think a lot of what you hear in the evening time are fireworks, but we'll give special attention in your area to see what we come up with. Hello?
Thank you, sir. So you, you perceive these to be fireworks? Are they still protesting police benefits?
We don't have, in Glen Arden itself, we don't have an issue with people protesting the police at this time.
So why would there be fireworks?
People just get fire, get fireworks and shoot them off.
Okay.
I mean, that seems to be what's going on pretty much through the city.
Okay, all right, great. Well, you know, chief, I'm from a small town originally, so I know about fireworks, but I also know on New Year's, there are weapon trees that are just discharged because it's exciting and fun. But I understand. Thank you so much for the clarification.
Thank you.
And just a point of information, in reading my surveillance video information, cities, neighborhoods within proximity to Glen Arden are also experiencing that. A lot of the neighbors say that it's cars backfiring, or it's somebody that's caused their exhaust to be able, this one neighborhood, they say this guy, they've identified this gentleman that has this car that he's done something to that causes, every time he takes off, it causes, it sounds like gunfire, because they're all complaining in that neighborhood. So they finally pinpointed it down. This is the neighborhood over beyond the stadium, that they're saying they pinpointed this person. And a lot of neighbors seem to think that it's cars, these cars, that they're doing something to the exhaust systems that caused them to backfire and, and it sounds like gunshots.
Thank you for the clarification. So I, I would suspect there isn't a code enforcement, like with the chicken?
Well, we do have a code against fireworks, but I, I just haven't seen any fireworks lately. And the only time we really get fireworks issues is around 4th of July in the city of Glen Arden. I just haven't seen any, any other, you know, as I walk through the city. I just haven't seen any fireworks lately. It's just 4th of July that we experience a lot of fireworks. So, but they say it's, you know, it's not really gunshot. It's, it's, and then the, the loud booms that they hear, a lot of people are saying that it could be from the, the purple line that's being constructed, construction from that. It just, these sounds just have not really been identified, other than the one, like, when I said, the community said it was a car, a car that's causing this issue. So we'll see.
Thank you for the clarification, Madam President.
You're welcome. Any other citizens' comments? All right, let me go to page two real quick. Make sure I don't want to miss anybody. Mr. Ricky Montgomery? I mute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, there you go.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to just acknowledge and, and thank everyone on this panel, which is all the councilmen and, and the mayor, especially the mayor for recommending that Tim George is our city management. I really appreciate that. I thought he has did a wonderful work for the city already, and I just want to acknowledge that. Thank you, Mr. George, and thank you, Mr. Mayor. And also, too, I want to go back to the chief. There was a comment I made, I think, several meetings ago. Have you gotten those tires yet for that, for that SUV?
Can you hear me?
Yes. I can't hear you. Oh, I can hear you now.
Okay, yeah. I took it over to the fleet, and they say I don't need tires.
Oh, they say you didn't need tires?
The fleet management said I did not need tires.
Okay, all right, well.
But thanks for your concern.
Did, did you measure, did you put a dime in between the threads of the tire?
I didn't do anything. I gave it to the mechanic.
Okay, all right, okay. Well, that's all my comments for tonight.
All right, sir, thank you. Okay. Any other citizens' comments? Ms. Fahid again?
Yes, I, um, I was reminded that I did have a question for Chief O'Donnell. Chief O'Donnell, you mentioned that you met with the property manager over here at Woodmore Town Center and about people really flying through those stop signs, and you said that that had been resolved. How, how has that been resolved? Because, I mean, I see it every day. I know I've had communication with you about that. You know, people don't stop. People fly through here.
We're up there every day, and we issue tickets, ma'am.
Okay, excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Any other citizens' comments? All right, it is now 9:09, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all. Appreciate your.
Yeah.
Jim, good night.
Good night.
Good night, everyone. That was a, that was a piece.